This is our abbreviated agenda. No pledge of allegiance. But we'll pledge to have a great holiday time, right? So this is the Bennington Select Board Meeting, Monday, December 19th, 2016. Normally, we would be meeting next Monday, right?
That's correct.
So our agenda is somewhat brief, but we do have our consent agenda. The minutes from December 12th have been included in our package, December 12th, 2016. And the warrants have also been circulated. And upon your approval of the consent agenda, all sign the warrant.
I'm moved.
I've got a motion and a second.
I'll second with the proviso. There's a spelling change. Mary Gerish's name, her name should be spelled G E R I S C H.
O C H.
That would be the only correction or change.
And it's an E, a rather than a.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So having the correction, is there any other discussion on the consent agenda, including the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
That's every seven in favor and no opposition to it. We have the Bennington Project Independence wanting to visit with us tonight.
Yes, they may. In fact, the.
Yeah, I think I saw them.
Go ahead, Graff, sir.
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
And why don't you just, the reason we're visiting, they're on the ballot.
They are on the ballot this year for $10,000? I don't know. I don't recall it. Wait. Might be.
Is that the budget?
Yes.
Linda. Anywhere you can get comfortable. Hi, Mary. Linda, how are you?
Sorry. Nice chili out there.
Thank you for visiting with us. Why don't we go around and introduce ourselves so that it makes sense for Linda, who was representing the Bennington Project Independence tonight? Why don't we start right with Jean.
Do we actually know each other?
Yeah.
It's an honor.
Stu Heard, as you well know.
Donald Campbell. Tom Jacobs.
Michael Keane.
Jeanne Jenkins.
Tim Carroll.
Justin Corrigan.
Great. And who's going to be visiting with us tonight beside yourself, Linda?
Mary Morrissey is. These are some members of our board. Mary Morrissey, Lynn Stratton, and Linda Putney.
Great. You're well served. March time meeting is not that far off. And this is an opportunity for a conversation with the board relative to your organization and the fact that it's going to be on the ballot. And what are your hopes and expectations for next year? Maybe if you could just give some of us some history about BPI, its mission, its activities, what it'd like to accomplish, and we'll have a conversation. That's basically it. If that's all right with you.
Wonderful. Appreciate the opportunity to help get the word out about Bennington Project Independence. And some of you are very familiar with us and some of you are not. But Bennington Project Independence has actually been serving Bennington County, Bennington proper, for 38 years. And we've been quietly doing our business. And our business is Adult Day Services. Now, many people are not familiar with what that is. It's an option to traditional nursing home care. It's a creative and compassionate alternative. We are part of the long-term care spectrum. So there's home care, assisted living, Adult Day Services, nursing home. And it's, Bennington actually is wonderful because they have so many wonderful services, and BPI is part of that. Adult Day is perhaps the future linchpin. You asked about our goals and our objectives. Everything that we've been told from Medicaid and Medicare coming down from the federal government indicates that Adult Day is really poised to be one of the linchpins of aging in place in our community. So we're very proud to actually be on the forefront and the wonderful program that we've created. Many of you have been up to the Dr. Richard A. Sleeman Center. And if you have not, we certainly encourage you to come up and visit and check out everything that's there. We actually serve a variety of people in our day program, from people who are age 18 and over. Many people are not familiar. They think of us as perhaps, perhaps a more elderly population is being served. But we do serve people age 18 and over. Our youngest right now is, is 27, and our eldest is 98. So it's a really broad spectrum of men and women from a wide variety of economic service spectrums and life experiences. Our younger population tends to be people who might age out of the school system. And because of their disability, they may not have a place to go that fits their needs. They might not have the abilities to pursue a vocational rehabilitation type of track or future. And they might need to, unfortunately, their alternative might be to spend their lives in a nursing home. So they can spend their time with us and return to their own family's homes in the evening. We also, there's some of our other younger people who are in our program, or people who are, have suffered traumatic brain injury. We have a number of veterans who are in our program. Bennington Project Independence is an Adult Day Center for the VA. We're very proud to serve our veterans. And we actually have one of the highest population of veterans in the state of Vermont in our Adult Days program. So we do have younger disabled veterans, unfortunately, from some of the recent conflicts. And we've been told by the Veterans Administration to expect that, again, that population, unfortunately, may grow for us. But we're there to serve and very proud of it. Our older population tends to be people who are physically challenged in some way, post-stroke, MS, delicate medical conditions where it's not a great idea for them to be home alone for an extended period of time. So we have, for our older people, it might be that some of our people just wanted the opportunity to get out of their homes. They may be going through the bereavement process. They may just, the world has become quite small for them. They may not drive anymore. They want an opportunity to get out and about. And those seniors use us for a little while. They may need a little support through a difficult period, and then they move on. They go volunteer at the hospital. They go to the senior center. They just needed care for a short period of time. The people who are facing more medical challenges and some other difficulties need some support during the day where it's not a great idea for them to be home alone for an extended period of time. So they come to us for a variety of needs and reasons. We also have a high percentage of people with Alzheimer's disease and other kinds of cognitive impairment. And when we say Alzheimer's disease, many people are familiar with it, but from early to end stage. And many people are not aware that we can serve people, again, from early to end. It might be people with very basic memory problems, like I might be having tonight, to severe end-of-life situations. So we are able to help people through the spectrum. And we do have a number of people who are at end-of-life. And we do serve people who are also on hospice. As long as they are able to physically come to our day center, they're welcome. And we work closely with hospice for those individuals. So it's a really broad spectrum of people that we're able to serve. And the advantage of us being a private nonprofit agency is that we can tailor our program to meet the needs of the individuals in the program. And so all of our programs are designed around the individual needs. So our program is constantly changing. And that's the wonderful part about what BPI is, is that we can make those changes more readily than some other organizations. And our services really quite broadly range from healthcare. We have nurses on staff. We have LNA's and LPNs and RNs to provide in-home, in-service medical care. We can provide the same sort of medical care that someone might receive in a nursing home. That might be oxygen therapy. It might be IV therapies. It might be medication administration, steroid medications. Again, the wide range, what they need. The advantage is, again, as I said, that people have the opportunity then to go home in the evening, go to their own homes or their family's homes. So they can receive intense care during the day and then return to their own home. We have a social worker on staff who works closely with the other agencies to help people navigate through the rather complicated long-term care system, insurance systems, and many things that are going on. We have, we're very fortunate that Dr. Richard A. Sleeman Center have our own kitchen and a wonderful cook, and we love to eat. So we love to cook. And so there's fresh homemade lunches and snacks for everyone. We just had an amazing Christmas party for our participants and their families. We had a Christmas party for 120 people.
Is that over here?
At the Elks.
At the Elks, yeah.
We were probably rocking the town.
Yeah, because I heard up the street. I couldn't get asleep.
We were raided or anything. But that's a wonderful opportunity for our participants and our families. We, again, our activity program, we have very dedicated activity professionals. We offer about 25 activities a day that people can pick and choose from, which is really quite amazing. And our staffing ratio is one to five.
Wow.
The state requirement is one to seven, but we try to go above and beyond because of the intense needs of some of our people. Again, some of our people may, without us and their family's support, which is critical, would not be able to remain at home. And somewhat, we've had some wonderful things that have happened with our participants. I'd like to share, one of our younger participants who came to us was really quite an impaired individual. And his family came to us one day and said they hadn't seen their son smile in years. And it was the first time that in years they were able to see him smile. So it was a wonderful thing. The little, small victories are what we really kind of go for and that can really warm the hearts and keep our staff going. And we are, again, there for all of our participants and our families. We do a lot of support for our families. There is our Families Together program, which is an innovative, not really a true support model, but it's a gathering of family caregivers. And it's actually, we've had some programs nationally who have replicated it with us. So we're very pleased to share that. Our model for that one is, when was the last time you laughed with a friend? Because when you're providing care for someone, it's, many times, there might be a unique situation, someone falls, breaks a hip, and a lot of family and friends rally around that person. But as time goes on and care is, might be needed further than that, people go back to their lives and have, tend to drift away. Friends don't know how to support someone. Families don't necessarily, are not able to stay together in that way. And so there's a few people who become the family caregivers and hold, the unsung heroes, they hold the family together and they take care of that individual without support. And that connection, they're not able to. And 80% of the popular, 80% of the care is provided by in-home caregivers, by families. And we're here to support them and to help to share the care because they are really the heroes in all of this. We're just here to help them.
Well, I think it's even more than that from what we know about BPI. You have an amazing facility.
Yes.
Which is, probably helps to do a lot of these programs and get them up and running and be as effective as they are. What are your financial underpinnings relative to the facility? How do you make it with the town's financial support? Where does your operating budget come from?
Well, I like to refer to as a patchwork quilt.
Yep.
The majority of our funding is Medicaid funding. And that is community Medicaid and long-term care Medicaid. And through the Choices for Care program, which is a state Medicare and Medicaid-funded program, we are able to serve a wide variety of people. And that is really what makes Adult Day financially viable. Because there is no Medicare funding, unfortunately, nationally for Adult Day. We hope that someday there is some movement on the federal level to try to bring that onboard. It would make perfect sense, but we'll wait and see about that one. The Veterans Administration is a big component of our budget. We also have the town support, which is wonderful. And we are part of the Adult and Child Food Care Program. And that allows us to receive some financial support for the meals that we're providing. We're also actually a congregate meal site for the Council on Aging. And many people are not aware of that. And we receive some funding from them. Gifts and grants, fundraising, if you've attended our golf tournament in the past, hopefully we'll be doing that again. And we hope that people will come out and join us. So it's a, it's a patchwork quilt of things.
If you're a, quote, private pay, how does that work into the eligibility for BPI services?
Well, everyone is eligible to come to BPI. It's whether or not there might be additional funding. Now, the majority of our people do have some sort of public funding subsidy, whether it's through Medicaid and the VA, that. We do have a very generous sliding scale, which, and that is one of the ways that we use the town support, is to help support the difference, the shortfall between the sliding scale and the public subsidy and our actual costs. And our private pay and sliding fee combined is probably about 15% of our budget.
Well, what's the eligibility, population that you serve? Where do they come from? Is it just Bennington or Bennington County or the region?
Well, we serve all of Bennington County. And, but the majority of our people are from Bennington and North Bennington. Over 70% are from Bennington and North Bennington.
Great.
And then we have a percentage of about 15% from the North Shire.
You serve approximately how many folks on a daily basis? I know it's cyclical, probably, chances by the day of the program.
It does, because of the level of frailty of people that we encounter. But last year, we served, we served 127 people last year. Currently, on our caseload, we have 93 people who could attend the day program. That's not to say that 93 people come every day. Our building is large, but not that large. In fact, the Dr. Richard A. Sleeman Center actually has a whole other level that we have not yet built. So we're raising money to build so that we can continue to expand and meet the need. But we average about 45 to 50 people a day.
Great, great. I'm going to open up to my colleagues that I oversee. Jim's got a question.
I just, I want to give a little personal story here. My mother succumbed to Alzheimer's. It'll be three years in January. And in the, in the time that, you know, Alzheimer's was really sinking its teeth into her, she became really difficult to get to do anything. And my brothers and I thought of BPI and tried so very hard for many, many months, especially after my dad had died, because my mother never drove, to get her out of the house. And we had to trick her into getting into the car and taking her up to BPI. And we sat there in the parking lot begging her to get out of the car to go inside. And she said, "I'm not going in there with those old people." But we finally did get her to go in. And the transformation was just so, so funny, because not only did she enjoy it on her first visit, she demanded that she be brought up there every single day. And if she wasn't able to go up there, she was very, very upset. And she was just so pleased with it. And I just want to express to you my gratitude and the gratitude of my family for what you did. And I've never been able to say it to you, but I want you to know.
Thank you. Other members?
Can you give an idea of a ratio of staff to number of people cared for each day?
It's one to five.
One to five. I gotta understand that that work for LNA's and others is pretty stressful. How was your turnover?
Actually, we have a very long-lived staff. I'm prepared to admit this. I'm in my 29th year with the program. And many of our staff are in their 20 years of experience, 15. Generally, we have a very little turnover. In fact, this last year was the first time we had multiple openings, because we actually had staff retire from BPI. Who'd have thought?
I had the pleasure of hiring Linda when I was on the board.
Yes.
That was a coup, believe me.
What about trends in the population? How, how many people do you expect that you would be serving? Let's say, two years to five years hence. Probably some of us around this table.
Well, everyone's welcome. The trends seem to indicate, as, certainly as some of us Boomers are needing additional care and support, that our numbers are only going to continue to rise. And right now, the national statistics indicate about one to five, one to four people who are, throughout the US, are involved in some form of elder care. It's actually replacing childcare as the number-one dependent care issue facing our country right now. And they say by 2020, it'll be one to three. So the numbers are rising. Right now, the trends we're seeing, the Greatest Generation is passing away. And so we're seeing, which, I'm kind of equating this in terms of veterans, you know, Korean War and Vietnam War people who are coming into our program with different needs and different expectations. And so that's why it's important for us to continually retool and find out what they need and their families need. Because we don't want to be stagnant. We're not an institution. If we're not responsive to what the community needs, then we shouldn't be there.
In addition to the increase in population that you expect to see, do you foresee plans to increase the size of the facility in regard to that? What are your, what are your thoughts or what are your plans on that?
Well, we hope to finish the lower level.
Okay.
And that will give us a tremendous amount more space. There's another 8,000 square feet below us. So when we built the building, the project manager at the time, which we never believed him, he said, "The best thing you can do is dig a big hole and make a basement." And he's absolutely right. So that's where we, we already have that space available to us. And so in the future, hopefully, we'll be able to raise funds to complete that lower level, which would give us an opportunity to expand our rehabilitation component, because we work closely with physical therapists and that type of thing, so that they could come into the facility and meet and work with people and be able to expand that. Because we did, we were able to receive a grant from the Christopher Reeve Foundation, which was wonderful. In fact, the town money is very important because it's a tangible way to prove to funders that there is demonstrable community support. Anecdotal doesn't mean as much to foundations, but when they see that there's actual dollars that communities are investing, it makes such a huge impact. And we were able to get that grant, and we did a research project with them, which we called Renewed Steps, which was working with people with stroke and partial paralysis because of the strokes. And we were able to purchase a piece of exercise equipment, which you can use with one arm or one leg. And we were able to take people who could only do 22 steps a day to 2,200 steps a day. So it was just an amazing piece. But we needed that grant, and the community support was vital to that.
Thank you. The folks.
How many, how many of the towns actually fund you in the county? Do you receive funding from all of the towns in the county?
Right now, we receive funding from Powell, Shasberry, Arlington, and Bennington.
That's really the southern part of the county?
That's been, that was traditionally our population. But now that we're seeing that there's more people from the North Shire who have expressed an interest, we probably will be pursuing that also.
Okay.
So I just, I work for CCV as my day job. And I wanted to thank you for the great job you've done with interns over the years. And I know that's not just CCV, it's also Southern Vermont College and Bennington College. And now that I hear how long your staff have been with you, I'm starting, it gives me another window to think about why you're such a good internship site. But thank you.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of, kind of, hopefully, quick questions. Can you just speak for a minute on the benefit of coming to BPI versus staying in your own home, possibly with care? So, you know, it seems to me that BPI is social, you're with other people. So can you just speak to that for a minute?
Aging in place is very important. And if we all stopped and thought about it, how would you want to receive care? The first reaction is primarily, I'd like to have it in my home, and I don't necessarily want to leave. I want people to come to me, which is wonderful, but it's not necessarily practical. It's certainly extraordinarily expensive to pay in-home care on an hourly basis and receive the same benefits. Unfortunately, we actually work very closely with in-home care, because the combination between the family caregiver, the, perhaps the visiting nurse or vayata, and us, and the Council on Aging, make a wonderful team to be able to help people. If people are just receiving that hour of nursing care in the home, that's an hour a week, or a couple of hours a week. They might receive some personal care, that's a few hours. It's certainly not an opportunity to be with other people and get out and find some additional stimulation and find some challenges and enrichment that they didn't have the opportunity to. Many times, we hear that same thing, "I don't want to be with those old people. I don't, I'm not that bad," is a phrase that we hear quite a few times. And then we do hear, there's wonderful stories, thank you for sharing that, that people will turn around and go, "I wish I'd done this sooner." And we can't tell you the number of times that we've heard that, but it's trying to make that shift. So it's really not in opposition to home care, it's what we can do. It doesn't have to be necessarily a social person. It might be someone who just needs that extra push or an extra incentive to try something and not necessarily give up on life.
Do you see, like, depression lifting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it really, it's profound.
It's profound. We just actually received some information that was very, very startling to me. In, there was a study about loneliness. And if you think about, you know, how you experience loneliness in your life, and there's a scale about loneliness, and it said, the final end of the report was that loneliness can increase the risk of premature death by 14%. And so one of the ways to help to combat loneliness is to be with other people, to get out and share your skills, to share the experiences that you have that continue to make your life meaningful. So oftentimes, people who are facing disability or aging tend to not feel needed or wanted or valued anymore. And so one of our jobs is really to help continue to foster that.
Let's see. That's probably a long question. I'll skip that one. I just wanted to make sure people know that you provide transportation.
Yes.
Which is huge. How do participants find BPI? Do they get referred by their doctors? Do their family members find you?
Well, people come from a variety of backgrounds. The, our actual best resource is word of mouth.
Word of mouth, okay.
Word of mouth is our best resource. Physicians' offices, we work closely with them. Now, the transitional nurses and the new change in the healthcare initiatives that are in each offices, we're working closely with them. We work with the blueprint for health. And the Council on Aging, the visiting nurses, the nursing homes.
Lots of different ones.
Yes. Attorneys, bankers. But again, word of, word of mouth is our best.
The last question I had was, is the cost the same no matter what services you're accessing? So for instance, if someone's there and needs IV medication or therapy, do they pay more or does it cost more for that particular participant? Or is it the same for everyone?
If somebody is on Medicaid, the cost is the same for everything, irregardless. If someone is private pay, the cost is the same regardless.
Wow.
The only thing that, for someone who's private pay, if they wanted a shower, we might have an additional fee for that. We offer, many times, people will come and use our facility to shower because their bathrooms aren't accessible anymore. Maybe the tub is too high. So they may bring their clothes and take a shower in our spa, which we like to call our spa. And that way, they can take a shower, know that there's support if they need it, but a majority of people don't necessarily need it, they just needed a bathroom that was accessible to them. And then the other range is that someone may need complete care with that, assistance with that personal care.
Does any of the board members want to say?
Let's wait, stay on our board for a while, okay? Donald, do you have a question?
It sounds like very interesting. Patching it together, your quilt sounds very interesting. I have a couple of questions, and feel free to decline if it's too much detail, but I am interested to know what percent of your overall income budget, the bit that comes from Bennington is from the town. Just roughly.
It's less than 1%.
Okay, so it's not, that's a nice, small number.
It's a very small number, yes. It's a very important number.
Yeah, yeah, well, I heard what you were saying earlier about match and about skin in the game and all that kind of thing. So I'm glad that for the relatively small amount, we can, we can do that for BPI. I'm a little, I'm a little confused about the suite of services that you offer. So it sounds like some of them are medical and are some of them mental health, or is that, is it more like physical therapy and more? Well, what are the services that you offer there that would be either medical or mental health?
Well, there's a, the substantial medical services, healthcare services. Because there, originally, Adult Day was separate. There was a social model and a medical model. There was a social model and a medical model. We actually are a hybrid of the two. So we... Hello? Hi. We also do pet business.
Service, service.
This happens every time we have a meeting. She's already a board member.
I'll wait for her question. So we have a strong healthcare component, and then we have a strong activity component. And as for mental health, we have a high percentage of people with mental health issues. In fact, we have a contract with United Counseling to provide some support for some people who don't quite fit in their piece, and they would like to access some of our services. But primarily, the mental health component for our people are issues with depression, anxiety, grief, those types of things. We actually don't provide direct counseling.
I see. So autistic and people like that, would they seek services?
We've had some people who have been autistic spectrum, autism spectrum. But actually, you know, if they're better served in another system, we refer them to another system. We're not trying to duplicate or take over a situation. Because there's so many wonderful services, we should all work together and support one another for the best possible seamless service for that individual. If they can benefit from our service, then actually, you know, we would love to help.
So but most of the people that can, and I apologize for not already knowing this, but are people who have some fairly specific needs that need to be addressed. It's not like our senior center where somebody might walk in and play or participate and then walk out again. It's somebody who's a little further along in the, it's something that restricts their life.
Yes, we do have some people who actually have come from the senior center, then, you know, referred to us, that maybe they need some additional help or support. Maybe they're just looking for services, more activities that are consistent through the day versus the coming and going that you might do from an independent senior center function. But everyone who comes to our program has some sort of need or concern or issue that they would like help with or that their families have identified that they would benefit from.
That's great, thank you. The only last little bit, and this is just a nickel and a watch thing, but did you say already what your staff is, what the number of staff that you keep on there?
We have 23 people.
23 people, full-time?
Well, most of them are full-time. We have a few part-time people. Mostly, our drivers are part-time. As Jean mentioned, we have our own transportation. We work with the public transit provider to provide door-through-door transportation for our people in the greater Bennington area, and then Green Mountain provides transportation outside of that area.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time for coming tonight.
No, no, no.
Jim has another follow-up.
How many people do you service on a daily basis?
It averages between 45 to 50.
And what's your overall outside capability?
Right now, at this particular point in time, with the building the way it is without the lower level, we're looking at about 60 people.
60 people, and with the completion of the lower level?
Probably about 70.
And your staff is what currently?
23.
So what additional number of staff would be required?
Well, it might depend on the level of acuity of some of the people that would come to the program, but we would probably be adding additional, probably another three staff.
You have one more? Do you need to be, I assume you need to be certified by the state? And how often does that certification take care and what happened? And are you certified in some way by the federal government?
We're not certified by the federal government because, again, Medicare does not, is not involved. We do have an annual inspection by the Veterans Administration, which is quite comprehensive from the facility life safety to reviewing all of our policies and procedures and service, delivery, nursing, social work, everything. There is an inspection by the State of Vermont through the Department of Aging and Independent Living, and those are, we're certified with the State of Vermont.
Jean, to ask the, you know, other board members, Linda's done a pretty good job.
She's very, very good.
And with your vast experience and the benefits that this community has, you deserve not only the board's support, but the entire community. And it's, we're just blessed to have this organization here. Is there anything that you would like to add or share with us other than getting the vote out on the town meeting day for the support?
We thank, you know, we're very thankful for the opportunity to share the information. And if you have never been to the Dr. Richard Lee Sleeman Center, please, you know, come up. We would love to show it to anyone. People are welcome. We're open between 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, Monday through Friday, and we love to have visitors.
Very welcoming, very.
I just got a few thoughts by my...
Yeah, we've really got to the end of our time.
I'll be brief.
Very brief, please.
Do you feel that you're serving the community enough, or that is to say, are residents underserved?
We would like to see more people utilize our service. And our challenge is always to try to get, what's the best way to get the word out to them and to make them feel comfortable coming? Because, as you know, accessing the service is the hardest part, getting through the door. Once people realize that we're not going to keep them there, people feel...
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion. This is something that I pushed for long before I was elected, and that is CAT TV now, or plug for Mr. Cutler, is providing underwriting. And I know from personal experience, and I think everybody that sits around this table as a selectman or a select person, knows that the residents of this town, especially older residents, watch CAT TV. And it would be a great platform for you to show people what you do. So just a suggestion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for coming out in this dark, cold night, and we wish you many years of success, because your success is our success. It's always great seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have other business, and we'll probably start out with Stuart's report.
Well, this is my holiday present to you all. So thoughtful.
Where's the ribbon?
And I know some of you like electronic copies, but...
Can we get electronic?
You can, but I thought I'd hand these out, so you get them a little early. As you perhaps know, I think I sent you an email indicating that we have meetings scheduled for the 7th and the 14th, Saturday mornings, 8:00 till noon. We will be using the FIRE facility.
Great.
So we'll have a little more space, a little more room for others who want to join us. And the only two outside agencies that are really scheduled at this point would be the Bennington Free Library, because they are asking for a relatively substantial increase, and then the BBC to do their budget and work plan, which is really not an outside agency, but we've tried to work them into our budget process. So if there are other agencies that you think you would like to see included in the packet is the list of all of the agencies that will be on the ballot, as well as those agencies that we include in the ballot. That's towards the rear of the document, and we will be actually asking you to determine, other than those who petition, whether or not you're going to support them or normally would put them on the ballot because they were successful in your plans, so.
The agency funding, which you suggested, is potentially $124,300.
$124,300, and that rose from $111,800. Last year, Sunrise was successful in a petition to get on the ballot for, I think it was $10,000. And we added, well, I don't think I made you see that, somebody for $2,500, a smaller figure. So it bumped it up to the $124,300. And then the ones that we include in the budget, the two libraries, Lake Perrin and North Bennington, general recreation.
And these agencies that are on the ballot, do they also have tax exempt status if they have real estate?
Every one of them does. This year, and I have the letter, just received it today via email, the rescue squad will be asking you to place them on the ballot to continue their tax exempt status. As you all know, in the past, the chamber has received support for tax exempt status. It's a question whether or not they're legally allowed to be on the ballot because they're not a social service agency under the law. I don't know whether they're going to formalize a request or not. We've had some conversations. I happen to serve on their board as well, but I haven't seen anything formal from them yet.
I'm sure the media will be interested in this information, and you'll get it out in the form of...
It'll be available to them tomorrow. Essentially, I wanted you guys to have it first, guys and gals, I should say. And enjoy your reading.
Don't even want to think about it right this week.
No, you don't. I can tell you that the FIRE Fund and the Highway Fund are up a little, just a little over 2%. It's the general fund that had taken the biggest hit this year, principally because that's where most of the heavy lifting is done from insurance and workers' comp perspective. And you'll see that when you review the police budget. They took a very big hit on workers' comp this year, unanticipated as a matter of fact, but the state rate for police went up by 17%. So if you may look at that, plus the salary.
Mine's went up 42%, at least your cover here.
Overall, the rates did go up. We benefit because we have, well, we've had a good workers' mod, so we do get some credits against the overall increase. But basically, highway and police took the biggest hits in workers' comp this year.
Without going into great detail, are there questions that you have relative to the materials here?
Oh, yeah.
How would you like to handle it in terms of questions, Stuart? Would you like us to read through this and just hold our questions until the 7th and start working on things then?
Well, if you've got, well, that really, I guess, is a board prerogative. If you've got questions that you think will help the overall board understand, then those probably, if you give me a heads up, at least I'll be prepared to answer them. But if you've got an individual question that, you know, why is this the way it is, and it's one that can be answered quickly, I just soon get those and get them over with, so to speak.
It would be good if there's something in the general context of the questions that be asked us to and really have that sort of teed up for Saturday morning, because I think that'll move things along. Because some of these probably can be a quick yes or no, or here's why. But it'd be nice to have Stuart have that in advance on the bigger questions, or if there's, you know, a question that's a format or... I think, you know, we should have those in advance as much as possible if you can. And that's probably not really responsive, Donald, to what, you know...
I wonder if this is one of those issues where if there's any email on it, we should all be copied on it just because of it being sort of an ongoing dialogue, open meeting law.
Well, it's going to have to go to Stuart anyway.
Right.
And it's all going to be available, and the idea is not to do, conduct business that way, but if there is a...
But if, yeah, if the board member has a question that deals with the whole budget or the format, or a general question that everybody would be interested in, at least you can ask the question that way, copy the board, kind of will answer the question at the meeting.
Yeah, but we shouldn't be discussing...
No, it's not, it's a one-way, I think it should be one-way.
Yeah, but that would be nice, because, just so that I'm prepared for the trickier questions that might come up. As its schedule now stands, I'm going to try to do police, fire, and highway all on that first day. They are the most complicated. And then we would have the two interviews the following Saturday, finish out the administrative budgets and the recreation budget. And then generally, there's an executive session while you look at the salaries for the manager, the clerk, and the treasurer. And then hopefully, we wrap it up on that second Saturday.
Great. That's the goal.
Move on.
It's 8:00 to what?
8:00 till noon. We'll have coffee and doughnut pastries or something.
I'll just get ready to sleep.
Well, there's that. If this doesn't produce the doughnut.
Basically, the hope for the citizen survey process is actually going to be in a citizens' forum that we're going to try to get into on the 30th of January, the separate meeting.
That's for the comments section. I think we had planned to do the release of the server results.
Yeah.
The charts and everything by the 9th, or they have the meeting on the 9th.
I think Michael's working on, and with Mike Harrington, to try to pull that together. But we're actually not going to be commenting upon it as a board at a meeting until the 30th, but just so the town is...
How many respondents so far? Did anybody know?
How many?
138.
530.
530.
Yeah, somewhere in that range.
Yeah. You know, that's a pretty good number for the first go-around, and it'd be interesting to see when we do the citizens forum, so that the citizens will have a chance to come and talk about it and exchange conversation about where we're strong, where we're weak, where we need help, where we don't need.
I think it was just over 200 that actually had a comment at the end of some fashion. Not everybody chose that.
Are these along the line where we could view them or...
Not yet. I guess we're going to...
No, we're still trying to pull out there. There were some duplicates and stuff on the comments section, so you don't know whether people hit send twice. So we're trying to work those things through so that we have them.
It's going to be helpful for the community. I think we're, the community and the board, with this first effort. I'm surprised that it was as well-received and people did spend time and energy to give us good commentary.
So you've seen some of the commentary, and you feel confident that we, from a budgetary point of view, we don't need to have that discussion before the 7th or the 14th? It doesn't really, whatever came up through the citizen survey doesn't really parlay directly into the...
Into the budget process. I don't really think so. It may be in March, you know, it's town meeting. But as far as the budget preparation discussion, I don't think that would be...
Taxes do come up a number of times.
Oh, yeah.
Always.
But if there was a big push for some sort of recreation thing, or a big push for some sort of...
Nothing that specific.
What's the general tenor? Has it been people venting their spleen or...
When you have a chance for a survey, an opportunity, it depends on your mood that moment in time. But I can tell you that the, let me put it this way, the comments were clear and articulate for the most part, and the survey doesn't paint a particularly rosy picture.
We knew that going in.
Yes, but when I, I don't want to get into it because it's not fair without having us looked at it. Let's, and also let me say, in all honesty, there's opportunity for us to take those comments and make it a better community.
It's also clear that it's the kind of survey we should be doing every year. No question about it. We should be getting points from our citizens every year.
But, yeah, it's, I'm looking forward to having a discussion with the community about it, because survey is one thing, to actually talk about it is another. And I think we've got to have, you know, a pizza party type with an atmosphere where there's not a table in front of us that we're sitting around with the community as a real exchange, so that folks can not just vent, but also come up with suggestions on how we might make it a better community.
And make them feel comfortable, that's not intimidating.
Also, we're going to be moving forward right afterwards with the charter commission appointment. If I could give you a present is for your own mind's eye to think about nine people or more that you think might be appropriate members of the appointed commission. And we'll do some advertising too, because it'll go out into the community and through the media, folks that might be interested. And then it's going to be up to us to determine how we want to appoint that commission.
Are there any prerequisites?
Citizens.
Just citizens?
Yeah. Interested, you know, registered voters.
North Bennington and Bennington.
Yeah, 18 years or more of age, you know. So I think someone can say it, maybe, shouldn't be just 18, but right now, that would be the thing. Right, just have some ideas of some names, and people might come to you, say, "I'm interested." And it's going to be, and I was thinking, maybe we could do it sort of, we've got a list of 100 people, and we vote, and the top nine get on our commission, or something is undemocratic or democratic.
Would it be helpful to know what things would be considered on...
We're going to have to do a lot of educating about, here's our charter, here's what we want. here's what we want to do. But this is really teeing up that preliminary process, because you're exactly right, Jim, we don't just say, we want nine people to be on a charter review committee without giving them some sort of guidance as far as what we're looking for. And it's a comprehensive charter review. And we've got subsections and paragraphs and articles in that charter that we would want folks to be interested in getting involved. And it's not a, this month and next month, we expect a report. It's going to probably go on for six to eight months of real review. That hasn't been done for quite a while. And so I think the community deserves that. And it even goes in some response to the survey, which we haven't been talked about yet, to involve the community in that. So I'm sure we'll hear more about it. But when Santa delivers the next day, start thinking about people. As I said, you'll probably hear from folks that are interested. And don't promise them anything other than the opportunity to.
And would it be the board selection?
Yeah, we actually point under the charter.
So as we're thinking of people, we need to be thinking of people who could tolerate or not tolerate, handle a six to eight-month commitment? Like maybe a meeting a week?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully it's making not.
A little much, a whole month, maybe?
A week?
It's going to be, I hope, we have to talk about that, but I would hope it's less than every year.
Yeah, it's just nice to have some sense of the time limit.
And would any?
That would depend on who I'd think about.
Would be there, be.
Their charge?
Well, a board member or board members that would sit on it.
Because recommendations come to the board.
Pardon me?
The recommendation's going to come from that commission to the board.
The board developing, they decide what they put on the ballot.
When's the last time this was done, Stuart? Your memory?
Sometime after 2010. And they changed, or there was a vote to try to change the preamble.
Yeah, but it wasn't a comprehensive one, right?
No, well, it was a comprehensive review, but the only thing they could bring out was.
They came up with, yes.
Certain language in the preamble, which ultimately passed here, but defeated at the legislature.
Yeah. I have in mind, there's a whole process.
Curious to see that, because it wasn't encompassing. They were looking at trying to make the preamble all-inclusive from a point of view of, it sounded like the equal opportunity employer language. And.
Wasn't consistent with the.
They insisted on not including certain classes of people. When it went north.
They were excluding?
They weren't including.
Including.
They weren't excluding, but they just, they didn't want to include some.
We just want anything that goes off, yes, but it is, it's going to be interesting.
I think an interesting outcome of that process would be that among the, among the people that would be on the committee, there would certainly be people that would identify themselves as future members of the select board. I think it's a great way to begin to think about recruiting people.
That's right. Other comments, I'll just go. Donald?
No other comments, happy holidays, everybody.
Echo, echo.
Very happy holidays, very happy, peaceful ones, quiet ones, safe ones.
And traveling. Home watch.
Traveling.
Come back safely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Safe trip home. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays. Same.
Right. Any other business to come for us?
We should wish Gina happy birthday.
That's right.
Fair enough, wherever, start this banking.
It is, yes, the minutes will note that. It will be in memoriamized with this. So, yes, happy birthday.
Not my birthday.
Were you just coming from your birthday party, is that what you were?
You kind of already celebrated over the weekend, because I knew I had this meeting.
Sorry, just spoil your birthday.
No, it's fine. I don't really celebrate them anymore, anyway.
We'll adjourn if there's a motion to adjourn?
Sure, if you have a quick executive session.
Oh, yes, if we could, please, on real estate, just.
Move that we go into executive session?
It's a matter that requires confidentiality because the notoriety of it would be inappropriate for public comment or the individual involved?
Yes.
I hear your motion.
I gave you a motion.
Second?
Second.
We're into executive session then. Thanks, Joey.